We're going to call this meeting to order. We're meeting in the Susan Tully Livesley Boardroom of the 1887 Building, Monday, February 10th at 6:00 P.M. Could we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Gehar?
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Here.
Mr. Martel?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell is under the weather, can't be here with us. We wish him a speedy recovery. Mrs. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Scaro?
Here.
Ms. Dikner is also under the weather. No, she has a conflict meeting tonight. I think she's perfectly healthy. Ms. Gotcha?
Here.
Oh, we do have a quorum. This meeting has been noticed for state statutes. Do we have any community participation that is not on the agenda tonight? It's like we have a lot from the Alternative High School. Looks like we have the Alternative High School.
Yeah.
And so we're going to dispense with reading that, and we can go on to the Alternative High School presentation.
Awesome. Hi, I'm Kelly Dumret. I've been here a lot. I brought the staff, the Alternative High School staff with me, so please. What I have to tell you is that while we are small, we are mighty. We also like to have a good time, as you can see, but tonight we're here talking to you about our efforts in Olveas. District-wide, we use the Olveas program, but of course with the Alternative High School, we do things a little differently. And I think some of the feedback that we've gotten from students propelled our efforts and also in ways that we also want to help other schools with in our presentations. So, oh, why didn't we go off that picture?
I don't like that.
I was just saying, if you're talking.
Sorry, you want to talk about the picture?
The picture is up there for a reason.
No, I need to, so they don't make.
But today we had Senior Day, so I definitely wanted to recognize my staff because they worked extra hard today. Make sure all of our seniors, sorry, are ready and on track for graduation. So, if we could all just introduce ourselves. Jen Taylor, math and special ed.
Debbie Barthol, my English.
Matt Wolfe, history.
Bridget Truman, science.
May Green, senior skills, and I am also one of the Olveas consultants and trainers for the district.
All right, you can move off the picture.
Do you want to, are you going to explain the picture so that Mr. Wolfe's?
Just wears that.
He has a variety of wigs.
Okay, let's just make this clear. I have the wigs. He uses. My wigs.
I see.
Are you going to donate them?
Yes.
Oh!
I haven't even donated them. Oh, the Can I Kiss You?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Can I Kiss You is.
That was already made.
We're all worried about his parents.
You get us off track when you start talking about wigs.
Can I Kiss You, it was the catchphrase for Mike Domish's presentation that has to do with respectful relationships. And he has been doing this very generously, donating this to our school since 1990. And so this was one of the T-shirts. This was one of the, the day before the presentation or the day out. I forget which one.
Day out.
But, yeah, and we prompt the students. It's always very provocative, like, what the heck is this up there? But.
I get a lot of no's when I wear that shirt.
The back says, "Do you ask?"
Yeah.
And so that's the premise of, yes, respectful relationships.
I've never heard of Mike. He's a national level presenter on respectful relationships.
International level, yeah. And presents to organizations, corporations, the military.
And we'll be at the Alternative High School on May 4th?
Yes.
Yes.
Of this year, so you are all invited if you would like to come and see his presentation. It is powerful. And I just.
I would highly recommend, if you can, make the time to go, May 4th, because Mike is fantastic, but watching him interact with a group of students who enjoy trying to shock you or ask provocative questions and the way he handles those and has frank conversations with them to help them have a better understanding of that need to ask for consent and be respectful and put in those relationships, so.
Yeah, what time of day is that?
It will probably be around nine o'clock.
Okay.
Some morning.
Okay.
We just got confirmation, so.
So I wanted to tell you guys a little bit about what Olveas looks like at the Alternative High School. So we start off every year with a kickoff, that pancake breakfast, and we actually serve the students, which before I worked at the Alternative High School, I never had the opportunity to do that. And actually, it's really humbling to serve the students, and I really enjoy it and they enjoy it. And then we actually split the kids into two groups, so new students get an introduction to the program and returning students get like a review. We have like a hoot that they can go through and remember kind of like the key ideas. So that's how we start off every year, and then we do have two class meetings per session. And the staff is wonderful, that they all kind of break off and work with me. So each staff member has a specific class meeting that they work on with me, so that responsibility is really shared. It's also responsive and student-centered. Our students actually give recommendations on topics that they want us to talk about, and they're really insightful, and we collect those throughout the year. They mention things like anger management, how do I control my anger when I'm feeling this way? What do I do if I lose a friend? Those were some things for this year as well that the students recommended. So we are very responsive to what we feel our students need, and then we do take their opinions into consideration as well and try to do our best to meet those needs. And we really feel that Olveas is a fantastic vehicle for us to address the social-emotional learning needs of our students as well.
All right. So these are examples of two of the lessons that we did this last couple of months. The first one was dealing with grief because we actually, a lot of our student population was touched by a loss of a student. She was not at our school at the time when she went to our school. And we felt that kind of the AHS way is to, instead of avoid an issue that is on people's minds, actually address it and confront it, which actually empowers the kids. And that hit multiple levels. I mean, we were more of addressing a need that was more immediate, but then more things come out. And then with the help of Caitlin Blatter, our social worker at our school, it's really nice to have that extra piece there because if there needs to be a further intervention, we actually have somebody on staff ready to help out the students. The one I helped out was actually body shaming. We talked about body image in general and what that looks like throughout history. And healthy image isn't necessarily an easy thing to define because what looks healthy may not necessarily be healthy. As an educator, it's nice to actually take an academic break, kind of switch sides of the brain and actually kind of have a social-emotional field trip inside the classroom. And the kids get to see you in a different light than they usually do, so it's nice.
We also had a video on there. I don't know if the group got a chance to see this already.
We don't have access to it.
And this was a graduation speech, and it was unprompted. She wrote this herself.
Could you just send that, the link for that?
I did see it. It's fantastic.
I know you said something about that.
So it's in the presentation.
We can't, we don't have access to everything.
Can we access?
Absolutely. And it was a really interesting. Was it Mike's program? So she had only been here this year. That's exactly what the Alternative High School represents. This school is not here to judge or to sugarcoat what your life has looked like until now. It's about having an honest conversation. Totally her own steam, and then of course they always have to check it over. But how insightful she was about the program and how powerful the program was to her and her journey at the Alternative High School really stunned all of us and really validated our efforts that this is meaningful. It creates our culture, our climate, but also, as the staff decided, gives students that vehicle to talk about things that might not be comfortable or sometimes even safe to talk about with their family and friends, that we could do it together and create some learning.
I think somebody recently just mentioned how to, one of the topics was, how do you break off a friendship?
How do you end a relationship in a healthy way?
Which I think is a hard thing for adults, and so it's kind of.
Yeah, I thought that was huge.
And to realize that, mobilize it and then ask for help in that is really big.
To even phrase it that way.
I guess the links.
Oh, okay.
For kind of share.
Thank you.
And then we always want to measure our efforts. And not everything can be as impactful in a survey as, say, a graduation speech, but we thought this information was really important to talk and share with you about, but also in our efforts moving forward. 100% of girls told the teacher or another adult at school that they were being bullied. 50% also told the parent or guardian, knowing that students may only be at our school for six months to a year. So think about that development in relationships and that safe place to be able to do that.
And not all day either.
Right.
The time is limited.
The way that reads, it sounds like 100% of the girls have been bullied.
Right.
100% of those who reported being bullied.
Right.
Or just that they're reporting that others have been bullied.
It's a vicious crowd.
We don't set it up so we can reap the rewards.
And sometimes the students who are doing the bullying are not from our school, but they're still comfortable enough to come talk to us about it.
82% of females were reporting that they try to help bully students because we also want to work on those bystanders and empowering them. And then the last piece of data, teachers at AHS intervene above the national average reported by students. According to data, 72% of boys say that we intervene and 50% of girls say that we intervene. And so when we think of measures in our school and how responsive we are to bullying within our school, that's really a measure that we want to capitalize on. And if that measure is not where we want it to, how are interventions with our staff seek to change that? Because that's what keeps kids safe, that they know that there are people there that they can talk to and will make a difference.
And we do talk about like our OBQ data every year. We analyze that data and we talk almost every staff weekly about, you know, how we can improve in this area and what our student needs are. So I think it's pretty intensive. One more piece of information from the OBQ that didn't fit on the slide that I think is worth noting is that the number of students who dislike school compared to the national average, like our kids actually really like school, you know what I mean? Like, I mean, that was a huge number also to pay attention to is that the kids are not reporting disliking school.
Any questions?
I just shared a video I saw today. So I think it's a Danish commercial, and they did it in English, about taking this huge group of people in the room, and, right, and so she knows what it is. I think this group of kids would be very impactful to this staff for the fact that they are so diverse, but yet sometimes we need to see that because we don't always realize we are diverse. And how we have things in common with people we would not think we would. It's a very good video.
OBQ, could you share what the acronym stands for?
That is the Olveas Bullying Questionnaire that is conducted every year, and that's where we get our data. There's lots of acronyms.
Any other questions?
Thank you for having us.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Stop and see us anytime. All right, we're moving on to the approval of the school board minutes for the regular and closed session meeting minutes of January 27th, 2020. Assuming everyone has read them, and are there any comments, changes? If not.
I'll make a move to approve the minutes of the January 27th, 2020, regular and closed session, school board meetings as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gehar?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scaro?
Yes.
And Ms. Gotcha?
All right, general and other fund bills. Mr. Truand?
The general and other fund bills this evening covers checks number 138843 through 139024. Wire transfers 542 through 561. ACH checks numbers 193 through 214. And one voided check of 138469 in the combined amount of $1,157,556.98. And then there was a memo providing some additional information on several of the bills in your board packet and then a copy of the treasury report from December at the end of the bill listing.
Are there any questions or comments regarding getting the bills? I will say, when I was reading through them, I was kind of skimming through quickly and because you can't always see exactly, follow the line across. It was, how come we're paying a school or some kind of official $4,000 or something like that? And I did a double take. Oh, I read the wrong one. I thought, boy, that school official thing really pays now.
It does.
I know, I know.
And you may recall, I did, we did kind of make them a little more condensed, so.
Right. Well, I was looking at it on the big screen too.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe that was my problem, so, but I corrected myself. If there is no comments or questions, we can entertain a motion.
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of February 10th, 2020. Check numbers 138843 to 139024. Wire transfers 542 to 561. ACH check numbers 193 to 214. And voided check number 138469 in the combined amount of $1,157,556.98 as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the general and other fund bills of February 12th, 2020. Check numbers 138843 to 139024. Wire transfers 542 to 561. ACH check numbers 193 to 214. And voiding check number 138469 in the combined amount of $1,157,556.98 as presented. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Talon.
Mr. Gehar?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scaro?
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes. Motion has carried. Report and discussion items. Student representative report, and Ms. Gotcha has to report for this evening.
Okay, so last Monday at the high school, they hosted readiness nights, where a future freshman could walk the halls, look at new clubs, and meet their teachers. Choir and band students are also getting prepared for their soul and ensemble competition, which is based as soon approaching. And also cheer and voice women did an outstanding job at their conference meet, taking first and second for Elkhorn. Finally, we sent six students to represent Elkhorn at Burlington's Leadership Conference this past Wednesday. They explored how one student's attitude could change numerous students. At the middle school, their wrestling team did an amazing job, taking five for the top 10, which was really good. And then this week, their student council is hosting a winter spirit week, allowing students to dress up in pajamas, winter clothes, and a lot of other fun stuff. And last Friday, their teachers and students celebrated National Student Counseling Day. And for the elementary, at Westside, their fifth graders had a lesson in coding where they learned to program a robot to move. And on February 7th, Tibbetts Elementary hosted their annual spelling bee. And they had also Crazy Hair Day and Olveas Orange Shirt Day. And finally, their music department just got over 20 ukuleles for their upcoming concert. I know. I thought that was really cool. And finally, at Jackson, last week they hosted their family fun night, Valentine Dance. And at Options, they held an informational meeting for their new and existing families who may be considering their career in college academy. They also hosted an evening for a community so individuals could learn more about the referendum. And next week, the American Heart Association will have a kickoff for their kindergarten through eighth grade students.
And that's about it? Go, Corvina. Anyone have any questions for each of them?
How was the turnout at the end of the meeting?
We had a 100% enrollment rate for families that attended.
That's great.
But they were seeking information for next year.
Sure.
But they ended up enrolling right away.
Oh!
So, yeah, so two new families, wasn't it?
I really wanted to be there, but I haven't.
Oh, the referendum.
Sorry.
Oh!
I'm sorry. We were talking about our informational nights.
Right.
Where those together. So, well, we have another informational night on February 27th, so anyone who wants to come to that.
I think we had five or six more people than anticipated, which was great.
That was great.
They're all happy to turn out and.
I asked someone who was a member of the parish, and I said, I thought maybe more people would come back nostalgic-wise.
Right.
And they said, no, we want it sold.
They're over the nostalgia.
It was really cute, so maybe that's good.
We did have a couple that came back just more to see what the building looked like from nostalgia, yeah.
All right, so now then following that, we have referendum update regarding communication plans. Mr. Tebloc?
Yeah, we went through those just to give you a little bit of what happened since our last meeting. We did have the open house at Options, and it was, I think, five or six people came through, which for the really large referendums, I think we only had, you know, eight to 10 people. But we do have another open house night, so for people to come. We've also met with the Booster Club, and it was a small group, but they had some, you know, good questions there. And today, Mr. Anselon and Mr. Truand met with the Kiwanis. And then we also met with Jackson PTA today, and both of those sessions went well. So then coming up in the next few weeks, we've got the Westside PTA, Westside Staff Meeting. We've already presented to the staff. It's more just to touch base in a small group to see if they have any questions because I presented to the entire staff. And then we have Rotary Club coming up on Wednesday. I'll do a presentation for them. And that's a pretty good size. We usually have about 35, 40 people at Rotary Club, so that'll be a good sized group. And then the Mini Maker Fair will have a booth set up over at the high school on Sunday from 9 to 4. Any questions on that?
Is there another community one scheduled?
Yeah, at March.
March.
It'll be at the end of March.
You mean the open house?
Yeah.
Isn't that February?
February.
27th.
The informational night for Options is the 27th.
Yeah, I think it's March.
Only on number two.
March 30th.
No, March 30th.
March 30th.
March 30th.
Before the election.
Right.
After spring break and before.
Yep, right.
The election. We wanted to have. Yeah, we wanted to have a close to the.
A few people asked me, and I was like, I'll look, but I don't know.
We want to have a close to the election timeframe and coincide with, we'll have another community connection that will go out. And it'll be able to remind people or let them know the open house and reminder that it'll be on the referendum.
I liked the booth where it was at Brandon last night. You walked in and I was right there. Goodness.
I think people like to look at the cost breakdown, which I understand because when you hear $6 million, geez, what are you doing for $6 million? So it's good we have it all spelled out so you can go through it.
All right, we will move on then to recommendations of the district of Muster. So we have personnel first.
We have a couple personnel items. We have the appointment of Mary Bass as a teaching assistant at Jackson. And Mary will be working four hours a day replacing Raquel Arceo. And then we also have Tom Sadart as a custodian, and he's replacing Audrey Green. And Tom works Jackson in the district office, so you may see Tom around from time to time.
Do anyone have any questions? If not, we can entertain a motion.
I move to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for February 10th, 2020 as presented.
We have a motion and a second to approve the personnel recommendation sheet. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, a motion is carried. And we have acceptance of school gifts.
All right, I have Lakeland Community Church, they donated the gifts to share this evening because I believe we previously shared the other ones, but we confirmed Lakeland Community Church donated $750 each also to Tibbetts Elementary and the Alternative High School.
That's amazing again. Motion to accept?
I'll sub move.
Second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the one school gift from Lakeland Community Church, donating $750 each to Tibbetts Elementary and the Alternative High School. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you again. Now we're on to Senate reading of revised policies.
I did have, Julia sent me a few suggestions, so I want to go ahead and go through those. They made sense, I think, just provided some clarity, a little bit more clarity to some of the policies. Free admissions, I did not receive any feedback as in regards to any changes needed. Are there any questions on the free admissions for senior citizens? Again, this would incorporate if they're 60 or older and not a resident of the school district, but their grandchildren or family member is, then they could get a senior pass. The next policy is related to the cancellations of co-curriculars. The only change was in the top two paragraphs, we used the term district administrator. And then in this fourth paragraph, it said the superintendent, so we just changed the language to district administrator just so that it's consistent. Otherwise, there were no further changes to that policy. And then on the graduation requirements, I left the recommended changes to what we reviewed last week. They're in the green there. And it's just giving clarification that, for example, if you're in the senior skills GED options two, what's the title of that diploma you receive? And so I went through and reviewed all of those with Kelly to make sure we had it right. And it's called the Elkhorn Alternative High School Diploma. And you can see in each of those, we just updated the names of those diplomas that they received. And we changed this language down here. I'm recommending it to be determined at their respective schools instead of school level.
When did that get changed?
Just today.
This afternoon.
Okay, because that's not what we have written in ours.
No, I emailed him the same.
Oh, you don't have the editors.
That's why I was like, I'm looking at what is to be.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I'd have to put you all as editors on this.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure that I was.
Thank you for saying something. I thought I was going crazy.
No, that's why.
Last time I did that edit mode, yeah.
No, and that's fine, just so we know. It makes sense what you did, so that's, I feel comfortable with that.
Yeah, any, oh, and this one, we cross off the N and we're recommending or students, the Alternative High School or Options Central School.
And then it should be in the next paragraph, too. Students of the Alternative High School or Options Central Charter School.
Oh, right.
Yeah. Not both, right.
So it's consistent.
Looking good. Any other comments or questions?
Just to let you know, the question I asked. Just to let you know, the question I asked about the FIDE thing, I checked into that. That is state law. It was just cut and paste.
Right, I know, and I looked it up.
But I did, I did uh, expound upon that with some of the state people that they have the laws that don't let us with policy, just tell us what we're going to do then. Uh, or listen to us and let us have some say. We'll see where it goes.
Or give the flexibility to the school board to do that, yeah. Because we don't have, the school board doesn't have to have 24 credits. The state only requires the core, and I think part of why they might be, why they legislated that way is because they were giving flexibility in that core requirement, which I think is a total of 13 and a half credits is all they require. And then they recommend that a district uh, require a minimum of 21. But you have flexibility after what the state's minimum requirement is only like 13 and a half.
Yeah, I, I thought it was 16, but I knew it was a lot less. Yeah.
Yeah. I have to go back through. And it used to be less, maybe that's why, because the science and math used to just be two credits. They raised those to three credits each.
Right, right. So if you take the four, it's three and three.
English and science is three and then social studies is two and a half.
Is it? That was three.
Two and a half for three.
Okay.
So nine, thirteen, you're right. And then health and then a half credit of health and a credit and a half of E.
Yeah.
And that's it. And then you can do whatever else you want.
Jason, one other thing, um, under the civics test, under the graduation requirements?
Yes.
I had mentioned about in order to be eligible, it says in order to be eligible for a district high school diploma. Shouldn't that read Elkhorn Area High School?
Yeah, I, I looked at that one. I didn't recommend changing that. But I did brought that up because I forgot to talk about it. Because by saying district high school diploma, it's encompassing of all of them.
Okay.
And it's a state requirement that all of them fall under.
Okay, alright. It, we just spelled out Elkhorn Area High School elsewhere, so that's why I wondered if it was inconsistent or if it was put that way for a reason. But, okay, that makes sense.
We, we could add language to say a diploma in the Elkhorn Area School District because there are several different types of diplomas they earn.
Yeah.
If that makes it clear.
I, I just, yeah, I, I think it's fine. I just didn't understand why it was that way, but that makes sense.
Any other discussion? Alright, if none, we're looking for a motion to approve those as presented tonight, I guess.
Also move. Do I read it?
I think you should read it.
I can do that. I moved to approve policies 653.1 free admissions, 321.12 cancellation of co-curricular activities due to inclement weather, and 345.6 graduation requirements as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have um, motion to, motion and second to approve the policies um, as presented this evening. Uh, roll call vote please.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scara?
Yes.
Ms. Gachcha?
Yeah.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
And did I?
You forgot me.
Mr. Martel?
You forgot me.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
I put Mr. Martel's in here.
It's a budget thing too.
Alright, uh, on to announcements.
Yeah, I just have a couple announcements. The Maker Fair is this coming weekend. There's workshops on Saturday. And then the open events on Sunday. Uh, we again have our highest number of people who have registered for the free tickets. They moved from free to I think $5 a person after um, certain date last week. We had over 600 people pick up free tickets on that last day within about an eight to 10 hour period, so. Uh, we should have a good turnout for that. And uh, we did have a team of teachers just get back from the Project Lead the Way Summit. We were well represented um, down there. Um, Erica presented at a couple of instructional sessions. And then I presented at a um, couple of different sessions and worked on some of their panels to where they get feedback for Project Lead the Way and so forth. Uh, but the teachers who went got a lot of great tools and resources and really enjoyed the time. And our cheerleaders did make it back safe today from up north. They had to stay over an extra night due to inclement weather.
It was a good choice. I drove that route yesterday. It was bad.
Well, they had an accident, a bad accident just over by Jamesville.
Yeah, we saw it. We were there. It was not good.
So we, we left it up to the driver. I mean, he was, or she, you know, had the best bill and, and yeah, the driver said, well, like, it only go like 25 miles an hour. That's more comfortable than that.
And the roads were cleaned out by today and.
Yeah. Good decision.
I think so. Alright, any other business? If not, then entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm wanting motion to adjourn.
I've got capitalizing tonight.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Your motion came tonight.
Alright.
Well, you know, I just gotta keep.